At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session. This will be December the 7th of 2020. And in just a moment, we'll have our invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And I hope that all of you remember what happened on this day. On December the 7th, when Pearl Harbor was bombed, and so many of our US citizens were killed. And at this time, if you all would please rise and take a moment of silence for those members that were killed in Pearl Harbor. Our kind and most gracious, we come before you this evening. We come to you asking your blessings upon those folks who gave their lives for this country. Be with our families that have still with us today, whose grandfathers, fathers left them at that time. Be with our country. Be with our leaders. Be with those folks that they would do the things that need to be done to continue to make this a prosperous nation. Be with both our state and our local governments. Be with our first responders. Be with our military that's abroad and those that are at home, especially on this season. We'd ask you to bring your blessings upon those folks who've gone through some terrible crises in this part of the country, Lord, here in Alexander County. We'd ask you to bring your healing hand down on them and be with them tonight as they've gone through some terrible tragedies. Our first responders, those folks that responded to the scene, we'd ask you to be with them and their families as they go through the tragic ordeal of remembering the things that happened that day. Bless this county and bless us as we try to lead this county in a positive way. We asked all these things in thy name. Amen.
He would join me in pledging to allegiance to the great country which we're part of. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He may be seated. At this time, I'd ask if any commissioner has any report they'd like to give?
Mr. Chairman, I was thankful we got to attend a grand opening on Saturday. Myself and Commissioner Yoder were able to attend the opening of Shaggy's in Bethlehem. It's good to see, you know, their county's still moving ahead in retail with all the things that are going on. And I'm sure we'll be talking about it some more ahead, but the tragic rain and the loss of lives that we had during the storm in November and the roads that are washed out. And I've been a witness that a couple of the roads that work is progressing really good on Millersville Highway and 16. And some work should be going on on Liledown Road. I wish we had a whole bunch of roads that were damaged, but I just want to thank all of our citizens for having the patience as those things are going on. Sometimes you gotta, we plan a trip if we're going somewhere, you plan a route, but in Alexander County now, you kinda got a plan before you leave which road you can take and where you can go to get there. So just pray that everybody would be safe. If there's a barricade or a block there, don't go around it. Make sure that you stop and turn around, use a road that's good and safe. So I thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? On the road conditions here in the county, what we've been trying to do is try to stay in contact with the DOT, Division 12. We've been trying to stay in touch with them to get an update every two weeks or so on the conditions of the roads here in the county. And if you want to see those reports, alexandercounty.gov. Gary Harmon, our Public Relations Officer, has been putting that information out for us and trying to make sure that it's out there so that you'll be able to see it. And if you have any questions, you can call DOT, or if you need to, you can call and speak to someone at the county office and they'll direct you in the right way to go. But they were supposed to release some more contracts this week on the roads that still are in bad need of repair. And I haven't heard back from them yet. I will check with them the first of the week because like I told him, I check with him every two weeks. So I'll check him the first of the week to make sure. But you know, maintain your patience and be with us. They're doing a lot better job now than what happened when Liledown Road washed out. They are responding quickly and they're getting Millersville Road there in section 16 fixed, was just talked about. So please be patient with them. They're doing all they can do at this time and trying to get all the roads back to where they need to be.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say too, I think Senator Dean Proctor, he has been in the county like the day after it happened and looked at the roads that were damaged. Jeff Elmore has been aware of it. I've spoke with Andy Wells a couple of times and I'm sure all the other commissioners has been doing the calling too. So we're wanting to stay on top of it, try to get things back as quickly, but we want it to be safely. And I had a conversation with Mr. Wells. I said, "Some of them probably need to be put back just a little different than just the color." We actually need bridges, you know, in a lot of places. So they're looking, hopefully they'll take care of that and we'll move at a pretty good pace to get us maybe back functioning with the majority of those roads.
Thank you, sir. All right, if there's no one else. Gentlemen, you have your agenda before you tonight. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Make a motion. We approve.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Item number one on the agenda tonight is the swearing-in ceremony for our Alexander County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I believe we have Commissioner Peel and Commissioner Lael that will be sworn in. And you have the honor of Judge Graham, our district court judge will be doing this. So if you guys will come forward.
Okay, we can do it one at a time. You want to start with Josh? Josh, if you want to come up here and stand, do you have someone here to hold your Bible?
I thought I saw his wife with him. Yeah, I thought I saw her back there.
I just do want to say this before we begin, that it's always a great honor to participate in this. I appreciate being asked to do this and something I look forward to. I want to say that you all, and I think it goes without saying, you're true public servants. All these officials sitting up here, they're not doing it for glory or anything like that, certainly not doing it for the money. They're doing it because they have a great love for this county and for our community and they want to contribute. And they put in many hours of work and study and meeting the public and coming to these meetings. And I know from personal experience that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes meetings and training and things like that. So certainly, they deserve to be recognized and congratulations on your victory. And if you'll put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right and repeat after me. I, Josh Lael, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner for Alexander County according to the best of my skill and ability and according to law. So help me God. Congratulations. Can I get you to sign these? You've got a pen? Okay. Okay, and our next would be Jeffrey Peel. Jeff, do you have your wife or someone, your family members here? Okay, great. Great. Hey, super. Okay, again, it's a great honor to be asked to do this and I appreciate it. I want to congratulate you on your election, okay? All right, if you left hand on the Bible, raise your right and repeat after me. I, Jeffrey Peel, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God. I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner for Alexander County according to the best of my skill and ability and according to law. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is Jeff's second term and it'll be Josh's second term after about a four-year leave of absence, if I'm not mistaken.
Two-year break.
Two-year? Okay. Excuse me. Thank you, sir. But glad to have you back. And with that said, we'll get down to business. The second item on the agenda is the election of Alexander County Board Chair. At this time, I'll take motions for the chairman.
I nominate Larry Yoder.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any other nominations? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Election of Alexander County Board Vice Chairman. I entertain a motion at this time for the vice chairman.
Nominate Ronnie Reese.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for Ronnie Reese as Board Vice Chairman. Any discussion? Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. The motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Item number four, public comment. I think, Madam Clerk, we have three that signed up. I'll take a short minute here to go over this Alexander County Board of County Commissioners' public comment. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting of each month. The length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you have, please select one spokesperson to represent a group of citizens with the same concerns or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and must be scheduled for a future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. And at that time, I know we have three people on the list here tonight. Greg McLeod, Ridley Ranch Road. You're going to speak for him?
Yes.
Okay, if you'll step forward, ma'am, to the microphone and state your name so that the clerk will be able to get it, please. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. My name's Grace McLeod. Good evening, gentlemen. I thank you for the job that you guys do. I know it's not easy. I'm a retired police officer from Pensacola, Florida, and about September of 2019, I sent the Board an email regarding some property issues and neighbor issues we were having over there after I got a gun pulled on me by one of the neighbors after buying about 110 acres over there. And we've been having issues all along. There's been a lot of trash and a lot of stuff going on, and I'm not here to address that, although it's still an ongoing issue. I'm here to address the November 2nd meeting that where a board and he's an inspector, building inspector, came to the Board and said he was going to present facts in the case regarding Ridley Ranch Road. And once my husband showed me that, I've been staying out of it the whole year. I wrote y'all in September 2019 and that was it. I left it in your hands. But when I saw this guy, this video of this guy, when he came up here on November 2nd, this building inspector, and the stuff that he stated was facts that were going on, I just want to address some of that and some concerns I have about when I start building on my property, am I going to be treated the same way these other people are being treated that are building without permits, not having septic tank permits, not doing anything? And we've addressed that since September 2019. So I've been told by the county, you need to make sure you have your septic permits. You need to make sure you have all these permits, and I've been doing exactly that. But if other people in the community are not being treated the same, then I'll keep my revenue in my pocket that y'all should have, and I don't mind giving it to you because I want to support the county in what they do. But I want to be treated fair like everybody else. Now, this guy, I don't even know who he was, this building inspector, but he stated that one of the ladies had a tobacco barn on her property and there was some new construction going on. He said it wasn't. And obviously, he showed pictures. It's obviously new construction. He said it'd been there two or three years. That's not true. And the barn has been there, but the new construction had. And even one of you commissioners noticed that and brought it up, and he said, "No, no, this is not new construction. It happened several years ago." I was over there in August, and that porch wasn't there in August. And he was there, he said he was there September 2019. If he's a building inspector, he should have saw it wasn't there then and it's new construction. But I don't know if he doesn't want to do anything about it. I'm not sure what the issue is with this guy, but he also stated the property had been in her family and passed down. How many, what time is it?
Your time is up. Three minutes.
Already? Oh, no. Can I make you this?
That'll be fine. If you'll give it to her, she'll wait sure that we see it. Thank you very much, ma'am. Item number, the second speaker is Jimmy Lambert, Hidnike Family Campground.
My name is Jimmy Lambert, and I live at 542 Huckleberry Ridge Road in Hidnike. My property is adjacent to the property of Hidnike Campground. I've lived there for 48 years. I'm before you today to express my concerns in reference to the devastating flood in our county, particularly at my property and campground. There has been flooding and rescues at the Hidnike Campground previously this year. Due to these previous warnings, I feel that the loss of life at the last flood was senseless and irresponsible from the owners. According to the county maps, I have reviewed, any entire camping and living access are in a flood plain. Because of this, it will be a continuous danger to the campers and permanent residents, which there should not be permanent residents. And at the time of the flood, there were 15 permanent residents down there. We have never completely understood the volume of traffic coming and going from the campground since the courts have presided there. All kinds of vehicles would go in and out all day and all night, and mostly from Thursday till Sunday, and maybe stay 10, 15 minutes, come right back out. There were people who have wrecked over the property and very strongly appear to be under the influence. Law enforcement has indicated they have been drug arrests there also. My family sends the flood victims and sincere condolences for their loss of life and property. I hope this county will do everything in their power to prevent another tragedy loss of lives by not allowing the future camping at this location. And I, oh, they have an easement that goes across my property going into it, and that's the reason I'm concerned about the traffic part of it. And residents shouldn't be at that campground according to my easement. So I thank you, thank y'all for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, sir. And if you'd like to give the clerk a copy of what you have, that would be good and that way she can get it also to us too, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Our third speaker is Ben A.C. Heinz.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I worked with the Alexander County Board of Elections this year during both the spring primary election as well as the general election in November. And I'd like to ask the commissioners to consider recognizing and honoring the Board of Elections with the county's gratitude for seamlessly carrying out an election during this year of unprecedented challenges. The actual five-member board itself, in the anticipation of historic levels of mail-in voting, changed their meeting schedule to meet every week to handle those votes as they came in. The staff of the board, both the permanent staff as well as the temporary staff that were brought on, fielded countless phone calls and inquiries from citizens who were unfamiliar or unsure about the mail-in voting process, and we guided each one of those through. The permanent staff there, and particularly the Director of Elections, Patrick Wyke, I think are worthy of a citation of recognition from the county just for the incredible work that they did. We had, like I said, historic levels of mail-in voting. They managed to staff three different early voting sites, which is more than is required for a county of our size, but it made it incredibly convenient. And those were not only fully staffed, but due to Patrick's ability and foresight in staffing not only early voting but election day with not only full slates of staff members, but also scheduling those in alternating A-B teams so that if there were any exposures or infections, that we could isolate those. It was incredible to watch from the inside, and I think the results also speak for themselves. Never once did we close or limit hours due to the pandemic. There was 75% voter turnout statewide, and here in Alexander County, we had 82% turnout. That's extraordinary, and the reason that that was possible is because of the actions of Patrick Wyke and his team. So I thank you for your time and consideration, and I'll be happy to provide more details to the clerk in writing, but thank you all for that consideration tonight.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item number five on the agenda, public hearing, rezoning case 20-5. Bill Rogers. And at this time, gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing, please.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the rezoning case 20-5.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Seth?
Yes.
It had Bill's name down, but this is Seth Harris.
It is me, yes, sir. I didn't think I was going to be here, but here I am.
Oh, yes, sir. Gentlemen, due to a conflict of interest because of the part of like Commissioner being involved, he would like to recuse himself from this public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to allow him to do so at this time, please.
Make a motion to allow.
Motion's made and it's our second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Pennell.
Thank you, gentlemen. You have before you tonight rezoning case 20-5. The applicant is Jennifer Combs, and the property owner is Essie Isom. From what I understand, Jennifer Combs is the prospective buyer on this property. The current zoning district is RA 20 Residential-Agricultural. Proposed zoning district is Highway Commercial. Current land use is a vacant building which was a former church. Proposed use is retail. It consists of a little, right around half an acre on the corner. You can see on the map there Friendship Church or Wittenburg Road and NC 16. Use is within 100 feet include to the north, Commercial, that's a Dollar General there. To the south is the old Wittenburg School. To the east is the Wittenburg Volunteer Fire Department. And to the west is vacant property on that southwest corner and then, which is Zone Commercial, and then vacant neighborhood business property on that northwest corner. And you can see the zoning districts there to the north, Highway Commercial. South is RA 20, east is RA 20. So the 2008 future land use plan does show this intersection as being commercial in nature. Please note that all the uses allowed in Highway Commercial District should be considered not only the use for which the applicant is applying. Per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail to property owners within 100 feet of the parcel boundary, and a sign was posted on the property, and a notice was also published in the Taylorsville Times. Staff does recommend approval of the request based on being consistent with the 2008 future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on November 5th and unanimously recommended approval of the request due to the following: being consistent with the future land use map and consistent with goals and policies adopted in that plan. Does anybody have any questions for me?
As far as I can remember back, that was always used to be a store there. Mike Whitenham ran that thing back in the 70s. It's been a store forever, you know?
Was it a gas station?
It was a service station type thing there. He sold product out of the store there on the corner, you know? And he was a big, tall guy and just a super nice guy, but he ran that service station. And when you look at this, the first thing I thought about was him because that's where he ran his store right there on the corner where the church is at. You know, he was a very good man, took care of that neighborhood at that time. Good man. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? If not, do you have anyone that would want to speak to this, or are you the only one?
I think I'm the only one.
Okay, all right. Well, there's nothing from the audience and no commissioner has anything. I therefore accept a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's made and it's our second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Gentlemen, what would be your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve rezoning case 20-5 as it has got... Make a motion to approve rezoning case twenty-five as it has got recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission who met on November the fifth. The rezoning request is also consistent with future land use map and is also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in our plan.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Thank you very much, sir. And I think we have another one, do we not?
We do.
Item number six, rezoning case twenty-four. And if you would, gentlemen, I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing for rezoning case at this time, twenty-four.
Make a motion that we open the public hearing for zoning case twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. Thank you. For you again is rezoning case twenty-four. The applicant is Tyler Brown, who is here tonight, if you have any questions for him. Current zoning district is RA twenty residential agricultural. Proposed zoning district is HC Highway Commercial. The current land use is vacant, and the proposed use is for mini storage buildings and office space. The three lots together are approximately two point three acres. Uses within one hundred feet include to the north, Commercial Property, labeled as Brown and Stroud on the map there. To the south is Residential. To the east is the EMS base on one twenty-seventh. And then to the west is RA twenty property. The future land use plan contained within the two thousand nineteen Bethlehem Community Plan shows a portion of the subject area being commercial. And the attached map showing that is in your packet, and I understand that is very small, but it's there. The portion that's shown as being commercial is that the most easternmost tract next to the EMS base on that map. Please note that all the uses allowed in the highway commercial district should be considered not only the use for which the applicant is applying. And again, letters were sent by first-class mail to property owners within one hundred feet of the parcel boundary, a sign was posted on the property, and a notice was published in the Taylorville Times. Staff does recommend approval of the request based on being consistent with the intent of the Bethlehem Community Plan. And the Planning and Zoning Commission met on November fifth and unanimously recommended approval of the request due to the following, and that was being consistent with the intent of the Bethlehem Community Plan. And again, Mr. Brown, he is here tonight. Do you have any questions for him?
Okay. Gentlemen, anybody have any questions? If not, then I'd make, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing on rezoning case twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Is there any discussion? There being none. All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Gentlemen, what's your favor on this rezoning issue of RA twenty? Not RA twenty, twenty-one. Four, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve zoning case twenty-four based upon the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board and the fact that the zoning request is consistent with the intent of the Bethlehem Community Plan.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second at this time?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. All those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. I'm getting there, Mr. French.
Yes, sir.
Public hearing approval of road names, Green Apple Lane and Homestead Lane. Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff requests approval of the following road names as listed below. Names meet regulations as required. Names have been checked for duplication, sound indexing, and other qualifications. The two road name changes are Green Apple Lane and Homestead Lane.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion that we approve road name changes as presented by County Manager French.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? There being none. All those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand, please. Those opposed likewise. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. French. Alexander County, two thousand twenty audited financial statements PowerPoint, Martin Starnes and Associates.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Koteen Shaw Moses with Martin Starnes and Associates. Just wanted to let you guys know this is going to be on your fiscal year two thousand twenty financial statements. To date, we have Alexander County's report to the local government commission. They're tabbed behind on reviews, so if you guys can just bear with them and us on the final prints for your audit report, we'll get those to you as soon as we hear approval from the LGC on that. So for two thousand twenty, we issued an unmodified opinion, so that just means that we came and we audited your financial statements. We found no material misstatements that would lead us to believe that there is, that it would be misleading to its readers. We'd like to thank Jennifer and her staff. They did a great job this year. It was kind of hectic and crazy with the COVID, but we got, we got through it. So thank you, Jennifer. If we look at your revenues in the general fund at the end of the year, fifty percent of those revenues were property taxes, twenty-five percent was local option sales tax, eleven percent were your state and federal grants, and then we've got sales and services and permits and fee within the top three revenues at nine and two percent respectively. And then the rest of your revenue is made up two percent of total revenues. We look at the adveralarm taxes altogether. We saw a one and a half or one point fifteen percent increase, so it's pretty comparable to prior year. Again, this right here, it includes property and motor vehicle taxes. Although there were no tax rate changes, your revenues did increase a little bit, but we did see a little bit of a decrease in your collection percentage. It went from ninety-seven point forty-two percent to ninety-seven point seventeen. Then when we looked at your local option sales taxes, we saw a nine percent increase from the prior year. The increase here is mainly due to your Article thirty-nine forty-two and Medicaid Hold Harmless Again, restricted intergovernmental includes federal and state grants. Of course, we saw a little bit of an increase, about six point seven percent from the prior year. Some of this was attributable to revenues increased in the DSS part of the audit. And so in a little bit, you'll also see an increase in the expenditures as well. So whatever they spend, they get reimbursed back from the state forward. Then on the next slide, you're going to see, we're going to look at your expenditures. So your expenditures in the general fund get classified by, get grouped within functions of government. And so the largest function of government that you'll see a lot of, the most expenditures in, in the general fund is going to be public safety at twenty-nine percent, followed by human services, which includes DSS Health Department at twenty-six percent. Then we see your education at nineteen percent, and then general government at seventeen So within the public safety expenditures this year, this one will include your sheriff's department, detention center, fire protection, emergency communications, inspections, and emergency medical services. So we saw a one point six drop from the prior year, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And with the biggest decrease that we saw here was within emergency medical services. For human services, again, this is your DSS Health Department senior center activities for the year. We saw a five point seven percent increase or almost five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This is primarily due to increase in salaries and benefits, the group insurance for social services administration, and we also saw an increase with the COVID-nineteen response, the crisis response expenditures within the Health Department. So we look at education. This includes current expenses for the County Board of Education and the CBCC expenditures. There was approximately four point four percent increase or two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. The increase here is mainly due to the increase in the current expenses for the Alexander County Board of Education. And then your general government, which includes the governing body, administration, planning, finance, IT, public buildings, the garage, and human resources. There was about a two percent decrease from the prior year or about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The decrease is mainly due to no current year engineering expenses in these departments. So if we look at your general fund debt at the end of last year or for the fiscal year, there was one point two million dollars in current year debt service expense in the general fund. The total notes payable debt balance at the end of the year was four point four million dollars. And you'll see right there, the last piece of debt will be paid off in two thousand So when we talk about fund balance, fund balance serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. So you take your assets, your deferred inflows, and you subtract out your liabilities, deferred outflows, and then you arrive at fund balance and/or net position. Then within the governmental funds, you have five classifications of fund balance, and they include the nonspendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned fund So fund balance is important because the local government commission looks at it. Typically, it's calculated by taking your general fund fund balance, take away any nonspendable fund balance, which is prepaid and/or inventory, and then we also subtract out stabilization by state statute to arrive at your available fund balance. So the local government commission takes this calculation, they look at it for your county, and they compare it with you, with your peer group, your size. So where does your fund balance stand? We saw an increase in your general fund available fund balance of almost five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. This gives you a percentage of about thirty-three point thirty-four percent in fund balance, which we, which the local government considers about three to four months' worth of expenditures, taking into consideration that no revenues are coming in. So again, here's another slide on your available fund balance. Take your general fund fund balance, take away your nonspendable, your stabilization by state statute, you're looking at thirteen million, one seventy-eight, four ninety-seven, which is that increase of about five hundred ninety-two thousand from last year.
How do you see counties of our size in other areas how they're doing as far as fund balance is concerned?
I did look up, actually, this next slide here.
Okay.
Will give you your overall over the last three years, and I did look up a few of the surrounding counties and their fund balances over the last three years before I came tonight. And again, the data that I'm looking at, it's available on the local government website, and it is one year in arrears. So two thousand twenty numbers are not out there, but at the end of last year, your average for counties your size or the peer group was thirty-three point seventy-one percent at the end of two thousand nineteen. And you guys are at that thirty-three.
Point seven.
Yeah. You guys are right there, thirty-three point thirty-four. Are you, do you want to see what the surrounding counties' fund balance looks like?
It's sort of hard to compare us to like Catawba County anywhere.
It is, it is.
You know, I was looking at counties like, you know, Davie County and some of those areas, it's the same. And I just knew that our fund balance was, was right there on average with most of them. However, the LGC would prefer that you'd have like forty, forty-two percent fund balance that'd make them feel a whole lot better when they go to do loans and stuff. That's, you know, so that's why I was making the statement, okay?
Right.
I think it'd be good to let people know how well we're doing because I think this group has done anything they could to make sure that this county stays financially stable. And I think it's vitally important to our community to know what has gone on the last year to try to make sure that we do stay stable.
I'm Jennifer Herman. I'm the Finance Director. For our population group, which is twenty-five thousand to just about fifty thousand, and again, this is from June of two thousand nineteen, that's the information that's most readily available. Ash County was at thirty-six percent. Davie County was at twenty-four point seven five percent. Macon County was almost forty-nine percent. Scotland County, twenty-six percent. Yackon County, thirty-four percent. And where we were that time last year, thirty-one point seven. So we're right in there.
Right in there. Very good. Thank you very much, ma'am.
So again, looking at your, the county's available fund balance, it can cover about three times your total expenses. It's a slight increase from the prior year, and it's about average for the past three years for you guys. The local government commission prefers you to maintain a fund balance near your, the average of your peer group level. So looking at the solid waste fund, budgetary debt income here, it does not include depreciation. So this is more like a cash basis type of accounting here. So you guys ended up at sixty-four thousand, one eighteen. Overall, we saw a decrease in cash from operations from the prior year, and we saw a decrease in budgetary net income as well. So when we look at your net position for that fund, we saw a decrease in total net position of about almost thirteen thousand dollars. And then if we look at your water fund, the Bethlehem Water, we saw an increase in cash from operations from the prior year, and then also a decrease in budgetary net income of about three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. For the County Water and Sewer Fund, there was a decrease in cash from operations and a decrease in budgetary net income of about three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And the water funds, where they land in net position, you're looking at Bethlehem Water, three point one million dollars for unrestricted net position, and a deficit, three hundred seventy-two thousand for the County Water and Sewer Fund. Looking at the debt in the water funds, the debt will be paid off in two thousand thirty-five. Outstanding balance was four million, sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine. And then looking at three-year comparison with the water sewer funds here, your quick ratio is one point five eight. The quick ratio measures how many times your current assets are able to cover your current liabilities or the ability to meet short-term liabilities. So the county can cover its current liabilities one point five eight times, and the local government's concerned when this number gets below a one. And then the local government is normally, commission is normally concerned about units with a negative cash flow from operations, not taking into consideration debt service. And that's the end of my presentation.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? So I take it everything was good. There was nothing that y'all found?
I just didn't know if you, if we should discuss the findings or... Okay. So everything, we didn't have any findings with finance, the finance side of it. Our audit is kind of broken up into the finance side and then the compliance side. And the compliance side of it is us coming in determining which one of your grants we're going to test. And there's a calculation that we use to determine which, what we call major programs. And so you have to spend X dollar amount before we, it's a must that we test a program. But not only do we test X dollar amount of anything that's over X dollar amount... But not only do we test X dollar amount of anything that's over X dollar amount, we also have to get a certain coverage of your total grants that you have when we come in to test. And so Medicaid is a big grant for any county, it's, it's just a given, it's one of your biggest areas that you spend money on. And so this year, while we were testing Medicaid, we did have an issue with Medicaid. Again, I wish I had the audit report for you guys to look at, but I don't. We did just a quick glance at our, the issue that we found was, we tested 60 records, 60 Medicaid files, or payments, if you want to call it. And then we determined that one of the 60 that we looked at possibly could have been paid to a participant that was not eligible for the funding. So we, we've been in touch with the state on that, and we've been in touch with Michael at DSS on that, as well as Linda and, and the Consolidated Director as well. So they're aware of that, they've given us a response to that. So that'll come out when you guys see your report. Now, if you want me to go into more details, I can on that. That was, that was one of three issues we found over there this year.
Well, what were the other two?
The other, yes. So the next one, so when you deal with grants and confidentiality, confidential information, and it'll say in the Uniform Guidance that you're, you have to have controls, internal controls, over certain areas and over everything, pretty much. And so when we did a terminal walkthrough at the Department of Social Services Department, we found that one out of, I don't have the number right now, but we went around and we looked at the terminals to make sure that they weren't logged into the state system. And so we did find one that was still logged in, and the, the employee was not at her desk. So this surrounds, this is, so she was logged into the state system, and she just wasn't present. And her office door was open. So when we see weakness in control like that, we, we will report on it. The third one had to do with the reporting of the 1571. So the 1571 is where you report your admin expenditures for the programs, the DSS programs. And we did find an error, and I think there's, there was a couple turnovers in that department over there. And so what we found would happen during the turnover. An employee left in December, there was a temporary employee that came in for three months. And within those three months, we found errors in the way that they were reporting expenditures for reimbursement.
But all three of the issues were addressed with the, and they have taken corrective action, I'm sure.
We, so at the end of our field work, we obtained management responses and corrective action plans from Department of Social Services, yes. Next year, when we come, or when it's time for interim next year, we will follow up to make sure that those corrective action plans have been put in place.
That's one of the reasons we do the audit, is find things so that we make sure it's straightened out prior to. That way we get it corrected quickly. Very good. Anyone else have any questions?
We'd like to note the one thing where the solid waste fund was down, but we went 15 weeks and didn't charge anything at recycle centers.
Right.
There's, there's a logical reason for that.
Yeah, I had made a note of that, that it was closed for, you know, quite a bit of time. And one thing I also wanted to mention on the water and sewer funds, where you see those decreases, where the, the three-year trend looks like we're going down, we've got two very big projects going on. So for now, the liabilities are more than the assets, and we've got money going out, and we're having to draw down the loan funds. So that's why the cash looks a little bit in the, a bad place there because we are having to front the money, and then we draw down the loan funds as we meet the state's requirements. So those will be turning themselves around once we finish the project and draw down the loan funds.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir. At this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to approve the audit.
Make a motion to approve the audit by Martin Starr.
Motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. French. Item number nine, PowerPoint update for 2020 Alexander County Flood, call on Mr. Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time to be here. What I wanted to show you is a little PowerPoint. Basically, what you're going to see on this PowerPoint is mostly the road conditions that we see. I know I met with Mr. Yoder and House Representative Elmore, I think, a week after the storm, and we had a long discussion on some of the things. But I want to give you just a brief synopsis, a brief overview of what our office, what our local volunteer fire departments, what our CERT team, and what other counties did to help. At 3:38, Communications got its first phone call, referenced the first of the, I'd say, water-related incidents with something going on at one of the, the stations there in town itself. About 4 o'clock is when the water started going over the roadway, I was called out, 16 North and also Wilkes-Barre Road. And from about 4 o'clock to about 7 o'clock, we were dispatched over 50 different road closures, such as water over the roadway, we see Millersville right there, we see Macedonia Church Road right there. So we were dispatched out, our local fire departments and everything. We put surrounding counties on standby, put our local departments on standby, and they started responding. And I think it was about 5:20 that day with a house that was starting to flood. I believe it was on the Rocky Springs area. And we also had another house within about 15 minutes start to flood, Rocky Face Church, correction, Sulfur Springs Road itself. Just a little update, 911, or excuse me, 911 calls, and I know Greg sent these out to you. 911 calls on that day was 809 total telephones, calls received and processed, 188 were 911 calls, 621. We did multiple rescues, we had multiple different swiftwater rescue teams, we had Bethlehem Fire, we had Alexander Rescue, we had Wilks coming in that got called out, we had four from Mooresville Fire Department, we have one from Conover Fire Department. We had a couple deuce and a half from the CERT department here in the county to try to go out to different rescues, we had Sawmills. So we had multiple different departments from out of county, plus our departments going in. And I estimated that as we looked at it when I worked with Communications, that we had over 10 water rescues that were completed during that time. And this is not including the water rescue at Hopewell Church Road where the person lost his life in the motor vehicle accident, and also the water rescue at Princess Lane at Hidnite Family Campground. So by about 12 o'clock, we got it back down to about 15 roadways that we knew were closed, and that's at about 12 o'clock that afternoon. Later on that day, and later on the next day, we found out there was even more that we were looking at. As the days after, we found out that, and when I worked with Communication, I worked with the DOT, where I think at 18 roads that are still closed. They're working hard on Millersville. When I went by the other day with my wife, I thought about Dukes of Hazzards, but still didn't want to do that. So that, we rescued 31, Alexander Rescue, and all the Bethlehem Fire and Rescue, and Mooresville Fire and Rescue, and others, rescued 31 at Hickory, or excuse me, Hidnite Valley, or Family Campground, and as you're aware of, the five deaths there. As of today, 12 families are living in campers at the Fair Grove. We want to thank East Hattlesel Baptist Church, and we want to thank all the local Baptists, or not Baptists, all the local churches that adopted these families and are helping with that. We've got a big list that we want to show everybody and tell everybody, and I know I'll miss something, so I'm just going to put it out there. All the local volunteer fire departments, anybody that helped, even Jamie Steele, I called him at 5:30 in the morning, and I don't think he liked that phone call. But within 20 minutes, he was sitting at the church ready to open up, and I had one of the DSS members that actually beat him there, so I want to give her congratulations too. We used anybody from the Maintenance Department, DSS, when we opened up a shelter at East Hattlesel Baptist Church. The last number I looked at, we had 35 people that come into the shelter. We also had to think about the animal shelter because they were nice enough to come take the dogs and put them in the shelter for us because we got to take care of their children, as I call, because I have a fur baby myself, so we have to take care of them. And then everybody else, Charlotte's Task Force Three that come out, the, the Urban Search and Rescue. I know I'm going to forget somebody, and I got everybody towards the end, if you want to look at the pictures. And I did forget CERT at the last, so the sheriff knows that area real well, I think. Millersville Road, he was there for quite a bit when he come into our command post. Our office worked approximately, in the three-day period, we probably worked about 50 hours per person extra. And we are working to look at getting state declaration, they're still working on that process, and possibly federal declaration. And I'll just let you look at those, if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I think everybody did a really good job, quick responses, and the things that was done that day, in very horrible situations.
We, we did do an after-action report or after-action meeting with the local volunteer fire departments, the CERT, the North Carolina Forestry Service, Communications. We're going to work with the sheriff and do one with him too, due to COVID, we had to restrict the numbers. And one of the local volunteer fire departments says, "I've been around this world for 67 years, and I ain't never seen nothing this bad, and I hope I never see nothing this bad again." So you can't throw stones on it if you've never dealt with it. And that, that was always, because I always want to have, I know I'm not going to be perfect, but I always want to be the best I can. We did learn some stuff, we're going to work on that, we've already sat down, my office has already sat down, and, and we've worked on a game plan of what I want each, each department or each group to work with. We'll, we'll be back stronger as ever. Do I believe we'll see another weather issue in Alexander County? Most definitely, because this one was two weeks after another issue that we had.
I appreciate your, I'm just going to add one thing, you talked about speaking with Jamie Steele. I talked with Reverend Steele last week, and talked to him about the situation, and I called him to, to tell him how much we appreciated East Hattlesel stepping up to the plate whenever y'all called and got the facility up and everything. And he was extremely proud of all the responders and everybody that took, that was there, and everybody that came down to the church and assisted. And he was extremely proud of the citizens of Alexander County for stepping up to the plate, the other churches, and everyone that stepped up to make sure that revenue was sent in and brought in to help take care of these families, along with the Samaritan's Purse and Red Cross, and these others are able to take care of these families and give them stabilized to some degree so that they'll have a place to be. And for that, we'll be eternally grateful to our citizens and these churches that stepped up, and we appreciate that. And, you know, I, I know we appreciate the first responders and everybody who's there, the emergency personnel and all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you 3,000 times. And it's amazing what this community does in a time of crisis, how they step up to the plate and take care of it and make sure that people are taken care of. And for that, I want to say thank you to all, everyone who's made a contribution, and to all the people involved that day and the days afterwards, because it was a tough, tough assignment for those that were involved.
Most definitely. We actually worked with the, what we call the Critical Incident Stress Debriefing. It was on, I think, Tuesday evening, and we worked with Samaritan Purse and Billy Graham and their emergency response team. And we told everybody, we love our volunteers, they do a wonderful job. As Russell Green used to say, "I'll put them up against anybody in surrounding areas." But I also told them in that meeting that we also got to keep that up. We got to work together as Alexander County because these people saw things that they are never going to see in their life. It was dark, that was one of the issues, there was not much light, water was coming in from everywhere. The hydrologist from Greenville-Spartanburg come out and said there was 11 to 14 foot of water at the campground. There was three to five foot of sand still in the campground that come over. So these people have never seen that, so we want to make sure we keep our, our volunteers going and make sure that we step up and keep, keep an eye on them.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Doug, we certainly want to thank you guys, and sheriffs, thank you guys, and all y'all did too. Just, you know, CERT, I mean, everybody, good neighbors, you know, tons and tons of people trying to help. And it's great to live in a community where people want to help each other.
That's one of the reasons why I've never left.
I want to make a compliment to our county folks as well. Over the years, living here, the folks in our county come together in a time of need, no matter really how small or how great. I did have the opportunity to the campground while we're still doing rescue. Sheriff handled it very well down there with the media. A lot of volunteers out and about, I never once saw a volunteer complaining. They're all, they were just, you know, tunnel visioned in and doing what they needed to do. And then when it comes time to take care of victims, the outpouring of businesses and our citizens is overwhelming, so thank you.
No other questions?
No, just like I say, just as everybody else has echoed, I've never seen anything like it while I've been living in Alexander County. And what really struck me was, you know, we had more rain than seemingly any other county, really, you know, in the state, and even in the southeast, you know, as it was coming through. So, and I do send out my thanks to, you know, Sheriff's Department, Emergency Services, the CERT, to your people, everybody who worked in it, and to the citizens, you know, for stepping up too. So maybe we'll stay dry for a little while, so.
Little while, now we're expecting the white stuff eventually. But just talking about the rain, and I think Chad sent me the data from the Board of Education's rain gauge. From 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock, we got like seven inches of rain. And then when we talked to the hydrologist over at Greenville-Spartanburg, when he come up and did his investigations, over just that area of Princess Lane, some in Hidnite, and even some in the lower Whittenburg, they got up to nine inches of rain in that storm. So yes, we were definitely hit hard in that area. The lowest amount would been in the, I'd say, the L and D R area, and it was only just about six and a half inches.
Still a lot.
Only, only, compared to nine inches when it rushed in.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Item number 10 on the agenda, COVID-19 update, Leanne Wiston, Health and Human Services Director, and Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Your COVID update, we're sounding like a broken record for what, 10 months now, aren't we? And unfortunately, I don't have good news tonight. We are still one of 20 red counties in North Carolina. Red, meaning we see critical community spread for COVID-19 virus. And we know we're going to stay there for a month, that's, that doesn't change quickly. They're not updating prison numbers except monthly. So remember last meeting, we talked about those outbreak at the prison? There has been 193 cases related to the prison to date. As of today, we have 1,815 cases. That's cumulative cases, so that's, you know, 1,623 have recovered. Compared to the state dashboard, we've talked about the state dashboard numbers are not our numbers. Our numbers are accurate individuals as we count them. State numbers, sometimes, the state numbers are 1,853. A lot of times those state numbers are, can be duplicates, they can also be live in another county. So a lot of times, we're doing a lot of corrections to get those numbers accurate. We have had 18 deaths. We currently have 19 hospitalized, and, and that's about my only good news for tonight. That is down from 29 hospitalized last week, so we do have people improving and recovering, thank goodness. We have 155 individuals still quarantined. We have 155 individuals still quarantined. Just to give you an idea of how those positives are coming in, in September, we had 136 positives. October, 469, and November was 585. And I feel pretty sure we'll top that for December. We've tested 140 last week individuals. We came in this morning trying to notify 100 positives from last week's testing. But that gives you some ideas and some numbers to gauge with. We continue to test those same timeframes. We actually add testing when we need to. So many times, we've added Tuesday and Thursday. But standard, we're testing Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. People just need to call the Health Department and let us get that information over the phone. It's 632-9704. That way, we've got all the lab work ready to go, and we're still doing drive-through for the safety of staff and other clients coming into the Health Department. It's getting a little wet and cold to be out there, but luckily, our citizens are being pretty nice about that, and we try to get them through as quick as possible. Staff can do over 50 in 30 to 40 minutes. So it's, they're getting very efficient with that. We are just beginning to see those positives from Thanksgiving. I've had a lot of questions, you know, how is Thanksgiving turning out? And, you know, we're just now starting to see some of those numbers, so I really can't give you true indicators. Of course, it still seems to be very up, if that's, I expect it to be not great. So, and what we're doing right now is gearing up for a vaccine. We have heard that the earliest is December 14th, which is coming very soon. We could actually see vaccine distributed to us. The vaccine will be distributed in four phases, very specific phases. Phase one actually has two parts to it because we are expecting that vaccine to be very limited. Pfizer vaccine and Moderna are seeing great success rates, though. The clinical trials are showing 90 to 95% effectiveness in preventing. Children and pregnant women are not in those clinical trials. So those two groups are not gonna be in the vaccine at this point. We feel like they'll, you know, add that later, but right now, Phase 1A, when we do get that vaccine, is health care workers that are responding to COVID. So that's your health care workers at the greatest level, hospital staff, makes sense. We've got to keep them healthy. They've got to take care of our people. Some of your public health staff is in that group, not all. The nurses that are testing and vaccinating are certainly in that group. Lab staff and EMS is in that 1A. Then we go to 1B, and it gets your long-term care residents, which, again, is critical. That's where we're seeing lots of the deaths, so we need to protect those individuals. It'll expand to more frontline workers, incarcerated individuals that are in jails or incarcerated with two or more chronic diseases. So you can see how specific this phase criteria is. And when they say two-plus chronic diseases, it's just not any chronic diseases. It has to be cancer, kidney disease, COPD, immune suppression from an organ transplant, obesity, serious heart condition, sickle cell, or top-two diabetes is all that made the chronic diseases that we'll look at and evaluate, okay? And I have all that. If you'd like more information, next month will be your Health and Human Services report, and so I'll give you lots and lots of details. We'll actually have had some vaccine come in by then, and we can know more because then Phase 2 gets into more of your incarcerated individuals. Teachers and school staff are in Phase 2. 65-plus individuals with one or no chronic diseases, we get to by Phase 2.
But incarcerated people go before teachers and schools?
It doesn't say that, no. It's just in the list. And we aren't handling the incarcerated. They're being done by the state program themselves. It won't be through public health. Now, we will handle the jail and the incarcerated there. Those individuals have to have also two chronic diseases to be before the teachers. But good question. And then you finally get to Phase 4, and that's everybody else.
Just an observation.
I had the same thought, you know. We definitely need to take care of those incarcerated before we worry about the general public.
Yeah.
Centers for Disease Control worked on these criteria with the federal government. We are told who to vaccinate. They're expecting North Carolina's first weekly shipment to about have 85,000 doses of the Pfizer product. So 85,000 doses for all of North Carolina. So that's why it had to be so detailed. Yes, sir.
Now, is that a two-step vaccine?
It is.
So 85,000, and then that?
That same group will need. No, now, we're not holding vaccine. We'll get, we, and we don't know what we're gonna get yet. We don't know what product. We don't know if it's Pfizer or Moderna. If it's Pfizer, that product has to be kept at negative, minus 70 degrees Celsius. So you're talking about a dry ice product.
And it goes in your body that cold?
No, but it has to be stored that cold.
Okay.
And so there's a lot of work we're doing.
How does it get in? I'm not being difficult, but if it's kept at negative 4 million, and then it goes into your body, I mean, does it come out and it reach room temperature, and then you use it, or?
Yes, yes.
And it can stay there for?
It's a product that we reconstitute, so it's like a freeze-dried product that kept that cold, and then you add sterile water to it, I assume. I have not seen any of the directions yet. We're still getting training. Trainings, one of the trainings of the day that they're thinking the product may ship to North Carolina. So, you know, things are happening really quickly. But you will reconstitute that, and it'll be room temperature before we actually put it in your body. But it needs to be kept that cold until, you know, you take it out and you want to have the individual ready because you don't want it to sit there for two hours at room temperature. Does that make sense? So we're working through, we're planning to do vaccinations drive-through. So there's a lot of trying to figure out how we do that and how we keep that product cold until the person's sitting right in front of you. So it's a lot of logistics to work out with this. Staff is already tired, of course, from tracing and tracking down cases and doing labs. Now, we're gonna add vaccinations on top of that, which we're excited because we want to keep people, you know, we want to prevent people from getting sick and being hospitalized. But I will tell you, your staff is working seven days a week and half for 10 months, so that gets really difficult to do. This first round that we get, we are not holding back your second dose. If we do get Pfizer product, you have dose number two in 21 days. The Moderna product is 28 days. We will, the state is working on making sure we have dose number two. So does that make sense? If we get, let's say we get 50 doses, we're not gonna only vaccinate 25. We're gonna do all 50, and within that 21-day period, we'll get their second dose with the subsequent shipment. Does that make sense?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
An individual takes dose number one.
Yes.
And 14 days later, 20 days later, they are tested and positive for COVID. Do they still take the second dose?
I do not have that answer, just like I don't have a lot of answers. We're still doing training on vaccines. We, the state as a whole, we're asking way more questions than we're getting answers. So we don't know. Just like if someone goes past 21 days, do we do dose two? Let's say they're two weeks late. Do we do dose two, or do we not? And when we ask that, the state says, "We don't know yet." So guidance is changing every hour because those trials continue, and I think that's why. They don't know. I don't have an answer because that situation very, very much could happen. What else can I tell you? We also are gonna have, also, your staff's having to learn a new, it's called COVID Vaccine Management System. We have NCR, North Carolina Immunization Registry, which many of you are familiar with. It's great. We can go in and pull up your vaccination record from anywhere, really. We put in vaccines from other states even. So let's say you can't find your vaccine record, but it's in NCR. We can pull it up. It has been great. It's been around a good while. I should have looked that up, 15 years, maybe. And before that, we would revaccinate sometimes. A child might be at the doctor's office with mom and get their shots last week, and dad didn't know, and bring them for, and we, you know, they would have kindergarten shots twice within a month. The NCR prevents a lot of that because we can check. I can look and see if a child got something in another county. So this, but that system can't manage the influx of COVID vaccine for everybody. So there's a new, single, separate management system just for COVID vaccine. I think it's a great plan because we certainly need to track it. We don't need people getting multiple vaccines that maybe have a little dementia and didn't even realize it, and families trying to help and get them different places for their health care. Maybe they were seen at their doctor's office, but they had come to the Health Department to get vaccines. So all vaccine in North Carolina will go into this system to prevent duplications. We haven't even had training on it yet. We know it's out there and it's coming. Hopefully, it comes before the vaccine gets here, right? So it's a lot of juggling happening. What else can I answer? Except we need to remind our citizens that right now is critical to keep your distance, wear your mask, hand wash, and try to stay away from crowds. We are seeing lots of community transmission. You know, no fault of anybody. Sometimes we have somebody start having symptoms. Once we do that contact tracing, we say, "Okay, you know, three days back, who have you been around? Did you wear a mask? Did you have more than 15 minutes' contact with them?" And sometimes, the mask is really making a big difference, and sometimes, both have wore masks, and there is still transmission. You know, it goes back to that, your immune system, and each, every individual's a little different, so. And it's hard to remember everybody you were around three days ago, right? You know, who did I, you know?
Just make sure you wear it, wash it, and wait, you know? I mean, it's constantly about the only thing I hear from people, you know? I don't know why, but they tend to, you know, you say it. Our public relations officer out there, he puts it out, and people don't understand why we, as county commissioners, aren't putting it out. Well, you know, our public relations officer is our voice for our county. And we all agree that, you know, I think we do. I'm not gonna speak for all of them. But, I mean, you know, wear your mask, do your social distancing, and wash your hands. I mean, it's the first thing you're taught as a little kid, you wash your hands, you know? And I was taught this thing, "Happy birthday" to myself, you know? And that gave you plenty of time to wash your hands. And I know that sounds silly, but, you know, I mean, it's just, I think the only thing that we're not doing now, I mean, that we're doing now that we used to not do, is wearing a mask. And, I mean, if it's flu season, all of us like, "Mm, man, he sneezed. I'm getting back a little bit here," you know? And you keep your hands washed. So I think that we just need to be careful in what we do and how we do it and do the best we can.
That's all we can do.
That's it.
And it is hard, you know? We're all fatigued. But we can't put our guard down now. Now's when we've got to be persistent.
That's exactly right.
I do want to make a comment here. There's tons of information on COVID. Anywhere you turn a TV, it pops up on your Facebook automatically. I mean, you name it. If you're not seeing and recognizing and can read or hear all the information being provided, then you probably have isolated yourself from the entire world, both electronically and physically. But folks are stating that people in authority need to make stern announcements. It's pretty simple. It's just like Commissioner Yoder stated. Face mask, wash your hands, six foot apart, isolate yourself if you've got a fever. You know, all that good stuff that you were taught when you were little. And I truly believe it doesn't matter who says it to you, if you're not gonna do it, you're not gonna do it. But that's just my opinion. But if it will help someone else to maybe wear a face mask or respect someone beside them, then I want to make the statement.
But it's still strange to drive up to a bank teller and go and do something there with a mask on. I still feel strange doing that.
Feel like you're gonna rob them, Mark.
But we need to wear a mask and just wash our hands and do the social distancing thing, you know? And, you know, we will get through this.
We will.
It's not the first time that we've had something like this come through the United States. And it's just that we have more people now, and it's just harder to get the control of it. You know, so I think we're on the right track, and I think things will happen for the better. And we need to get it to the rural communities. They don't need to forget the rural communities. We're here, people. Hear our voices. We count. The rural communities count, so, you know, so thank you for all you do.
Thank y'all.
Island number 11, County Manager, Mr. Rick French, board appointments. Oh, excuse me, Doug, I'm sorry. Come on, I'm sorry, man. I just, we did so much talking, I didn't think about it. I do apologize, sir. I didn't cut you off intentionally.
I just wanted to bring up, PPEs were doing pretty good. One of the things that Ms. Wiston talked about is vaccines. One of the things I started looking at is, we've had issues with PPEs over the last couple of months, or well, the last 10 months. We're getting to give a vaccine. Do we have enough needles? Do we have enough syringes? Do we have enough alcohol preps? Do we have enough, everything we need to use this? Because we do have permission to, our EMS employees have permission to help Leanne and her Health Department to actually give the vaccination. We're qualified, and we have the equipment to do it. But what I heard today is each, you should be getting them in 100 allotments, and each will contain the needle, the syringe. So all we're gonna have to worry about is the alcohol prep and the Band-Aid. So that's something that I've been working on, working with North Carolina EM to make sure we have the right equipment and enough equipment to give that vaccination once it gets here.
Very good. Thank you. Island number 11, on the agenda, board appointments and reappointments, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The local emergency planning committee, reappoint Seth Harris three years. Patty Foster Nelson for three years. Library Board of Trustees, appoint Bailey Sherrill for three years. And Athena Ganto for three years.
Gentlemen, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. We approve all appointees as announced.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made. Second is in discussion. There being none, all those in favor, indicate the right hand. Those opposed, likewise. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. French. And then we'll go to island number 12, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 32 through 38.
Thank you, sir. Budget Amendment 32 is to budget for the fiscal year 2021 contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for the 160D Technical Planning Assistance. This is to look at our planning and zoning ordinances with changes that have happened in the North Carolina and the statutes. Number 33 is to increase the SSS budget for COVID foster care stipend funds from the state to disperse $100 per foster child during the months of April 2020 to September 2020. Number 34 is to increase the sheriff's office budget for the purchase of a used vehicle to replace a 2016 Dodge Charger that was wrecked in June of 2020 and deemed a total loss. The revenue source for the purchase is fund balance appropriated because the insurance proceeds of $16,854 were received at the end of the 2020 fiscal year. Number 35 is to increase the sheriff's budget for purchase of a professional-level all-weather drone. This drone will be shared with all departments. The need for this type of equipment was demonstrated during the events related to the flooding that occurred in November 2020. Number 36 is to budget for 2021 appropriation for citizens' emergency response team. That's the SRT that you heard talked about earlier. That's something that'll continue in our budget. That's something that'll continue in our budget. Budget Amendment number 37 is to budget for true-up adjustments for fiscal year 2020 tax revenues compared to the 2020 dispersments to the fire districts. And 38 is to adjust the multi-year grant project budget for a portion of the 25% municipal allocation being returned to the county by the town for the COVID relief fund. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Anyone have any questions? Entertaining motion to approve the Budget Amendments 32 through 38.
Make a motion that we approve Budget Ordinance Amendments for year 20. For annual budget, number 32 through number 38, as stated.
The motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made. Second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you.
Other business, County Managers Report, please.
Thank you, sir. A couple of things for information. One, we were notified by the North Carolina Department of Commerce in the last couple of weeks that Alexander County's going to be moved from a Tier 2 county to a Tier 1 county. The drop is mainly is due to the increase in the unemployment rate. That'll be effective January 1, and that really should help us with some of the grants that we're trying, we've tried to get in the past. That should help us some in obtaining some of those funds, so.
Does that mean we can go after a broadband?
That's USDA, and I don't think that's affected by the tier. What we're trying to get now, it may impact, it may impact the interest rate, may make it a little bit lower in some of the, some of our grant funds, but some of the funds are also loan funds. So, we'll be looking at those. Also, there is a dedication tomorrow, December 8, at 10:00, at the Services Center on the barn arc that you've seen on the side of the building. Looks really sharp. So, please plan on attending if you can. I have a number of other items, but I have a lot of things for closed session. So, unless you have any questions, I'll wait for that time. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Good. Thank you, sir. The Consent Agenda, entertaining motion?
Make a motion to accept Consent Agenda as stated in our agenda books.
The motion is made. Is there a second? Motion is made. Second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. At this time, we'll stand in adjournment and adjournment for the, and go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11, Paragraph A, 5 and 6, for contracts for personnel. We will re-adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only. No action will be taken. I'll make that in form of motion, gentlemen.
Seven.
Motion is made. Second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.